All righty, good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is our preliminary agenda review for the 25th, our regular session. So let's go through that for a minute. The first thing, we have the consent agenda. Department of Parks has some purchases and some contracts. Any questions about those? Oh, I'm sorry. And we also will be recognizing Black History Month at the meeting two weeks from now. Back down to the consent agenda. Any questions about the Parks contracts? How about utilities? The wastewater backhoe loader, emergency purchase for a valve replacement for the water department? Any questions on those? How about item C? Department of Community and Economic Development, street closers. I think there's some information in there, but I think it's about three closures that we know of so far for 2014. The open containers law exemption for the Blues Fest and August Over Fest.
Mr. Mayor, on Wind Down Fridays, part of the 13 closures that we were looking at, August, it has August 8th, but it's actually August 22nd. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next items, Police Department, there's a patrol rifles purchase and GPS units. Any questions about those? All right. And our clerk has brought to my attention that the unfinished business, instead of those four items being introductions, they should be approvals. So if you want to make a note of that, those are items up for approval. And under any questions about that, that's unfinished business. We're going to be going over the housing neighborhood stuff again today. So new business, approval of a resolution, placement of ATM machines at three locations. Any questions about that?
Something a little new for us, both parking decks and the farmer's market. But a good proposal that we got.
The item B, approval of contract for substructure rehabilitation of three bridges on Burrhands Boulevard. Any questions about those, other than the fact that we have to spend $200,000 to pay the railroad to have people monitoring? That's on our agenda for tonight as well, so we can come back to that. The Hagerstown Suns fireworks schedule is all for approval. Approval of healthcare changes for July 1, I believe. We're going to have some more information about that tonight as well. And then the approval of a proposed contract revision for urban partners. Any questions about that one? All righty then. That's it for the preliminary agenda. Again, we're not having a meeting next week. I would encourage council members, if they have questions about items, if they come up on items on the preliminary agenda, feel free to reach out to me or staff in the intervening And with that, we will go right into our next item on the agenda, the rehabilitation of the bridges on Burrhands.
Good evening. I asked that I could put this on the work session, just because I wanted to highlight some of the components of this project. It's not quite just as simple as awarding the contract. I just wanted to make everybody aware of a couple of things. So first off, this is, we don't need any decisions tonight. This will be on the agenda for the 25th. But it's rehabilitating three bridges on Burrhands Boulevard. If you go down Burrhands Boulevard and you get to Basil, Basil's to your right, you keep going, it's the next two bridges that you cross on your way down towards Wilson Boulevard. The third bridge is the one up at the concrete plant in the north Burrhands Boulevard, Thomas Benton Hunter's Concrete Plant. The bridges are all, the Burrhands Boulevard goes over the railroad in all three situations, and the railroad is Norfolk Southern in all three situations. The work is all underneath the bridges. The piers that hold up the bridges have significant concrete deterioration on them. The bridges, all the beams, all need painted. The bearings where the bridges sit on the piers and the abutments are in very poor condition. So what this contract does is actually jacks up the bridge a quarter of an inch, just a little bit, so you can still keep traffic on it, but that they can get under the bridge and work on those bearings and then do all this other work. So the contract itself is pretty straightforward. We've got 10 bids. The low bidder was from Florida, but looking at their resume today, they've done work all over the East Coast. They have a lot of VDOT work, doing very similar work. I think they have the experience, and I think as long as we award a contingent upon the federal aid and the State Highway Administration approving this, I think we should be fine. All this project is eligible for federal aid funding. That's 80%, so the 20% share is from the city. So the one thing I'll need you to approve on the 25th, if you will, is the word of the contract. The second thing is that we would like to hire State Highway's District Office to do the inspections. For $14,000, we basically get an inspector that has a lot of experience doing this kind of work, which we don't have. We don't do a lot of this type of thing. We only have one inspector right now, and I think this would be money well spent to work with State Highway and have them be the inspector for us on the project. They would report to us, but I'd like to have that agreement approved as well. And the third thing is actually the thing that Attorney Bill Naren and I have spent a ton of time, and that's the permission from Norfolk Southern and what it takes to get their permission to be able to work over their tracks. We've worked on this for months, I would say. But basically, what it came down to is a liability issue where they require that we indemnify them in case they make any, have any problems or cause any situations with their operation of their railroad. And that seemed to be totally unacceptable to us. We've worked through this a lot, but I think it really finally comes down to, I think I can report, it really comes down to the insurance that we get from our contractor. That contractor will need to identify not only us, but the railroad. And if they do that, and there are certain provisions in their insurance, then I think it's safe to say that we feel comfortable that we'll be okay.
But we will have to pay $199,156 to make sure their people are there watching us.
Yep.
I've heard of highway robbery, and this seems to me to be like railway robbery.
We're paying 20% of it.
Right. But still, that's taxpayer money.
Don't disagree with you, Mayor.
For railroad companies that are making billions of dollars.
Right.
Yeah, that's hard to swallow.
Who does bridge inspections for the city of Hagerstown? How often are they done?
Yeah, that's a good question. We are required by the State Highway, by the state, to inspect our bridges twice a year. So we've been watching these three bridges for probably about three or four inspection cycles. And they have to get to a point where they're eligible for federal aid funding. They actually have to deteriorate for enough that the rating of those bridges drops to a point where they become eligible for federal funding, and that's where they're at now. So they've been inspected every two years. All the bridges in town are inspected every two years.
How many bridges in town?
14.
14. And how many, how many of them are we going to be having problems with in the relatively near future?
I would say our bridges are generally in very good shape.
Are they?
The, we constantly look at the one up on South Prospect Street, which is just like 30 feet long.
Yeah.
It's an old bridge, always monitoring that. But I would say, once these three are corrected, I don't think we'll have any major bridge contracts for at least five years.
Okay.
Other than maintenance stuff, guardrails.
Is this company going to hire some local people?
They have local subs to do some of the...
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay, so some of the locals will benefit from this, then?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brubaker.
Rodney, I don't think this is broadsiding you. It's my standard question. Burrhands Boulevard is Route 11. That's a state highway, it's a state federal aid highway. Why are we, why are we doing the bridges?
It's, my understanding is for that, is that it's in the city. There's no agreement that they maintain that piece of road through the city. Like Route 40, there's an agreement that they do certain things and we do certain things, but Route 11, it's basically considered a city street.
As soon as it leaves the city boundary, the state, into the county, the state pays all the expenses. I'll bet they do in Williamsport as well. I'll look into it. But I think that's, I just don't understand it. I mean, it's, in the county, all the state highways are paid for. As soon as they hit the city boundary, they're not, and sooner or later, need to make a production out of that, because it makes no sense whatsoever. And here we are in a major project. Now, 80% of this one's federal aid. But it seems to me, it ought to be the state doing it, and the state using the federal bridge program, not us. I don't understand that.
Okay, I'll see what, I'll ask that question some more, but that was the answer I was given last time.
Well, you know, at some point, we don't insist. Again, it's a federal aid, I guarantee you, the state gets federal assistance for those miles that are in the city. I'll wager that they do. You know, because they get proportional money every year for U.S. routes from the federal government, right? Well, I just wonder if Route 11's not included in that.
In the incorporated area.
Yeah.
Rodney, one follow-up. It's pretty clear, from looking at the information you provided to us, that there's no one locally who bid on this project, right?
That's correct. No local generals.
Okay.
Right. The closest one was, I guess, Gaithersburg, maybe?
And that this company that got it was pretty significantly below, at least most of the, most of the estimates.
Mm-hmm. Significantly below the engineer's estimate, too.
Yeah. Much, almost a million dollars in one case.
Yeah. But it's, there's a lot of bids. I mean, anytime you get 10 bids, you're going to have pretty good competition, obviously.
Thank you.
And so you're pretty satisfied the liability issue is resolved, or?
I think as long as Bill, Kevin DeHaven and I review the policy, we get from the contractor when they submit it, to make sure that we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and we're fine.
Did you, do you have a verbal commitment on that?
From?
On the contractor issue?
Yes. Yeah, they're, as far as them providing insurance, yeah, they're required to. It's just, we just mean to make sure it says exactly what it needs to say.
Okay.
I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, good.
Any other questions or feedback? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is the Hagerstown Arts and Entertainment District logo. We have representatives from the Washington County Arts Council and Karen Giffen.
Sure.
Karen, introduce our guest, please.
I will. First of all, this is Chris Brewer. He's with the Washington County Arts Council. And he is the gallery manager. Mary Ann Burke sends her regrets. She is ill tonight, and she called, she really tried to get here. She called me twice today.
We hope she gets better soon.
Yes, we do, too. Also with us is Rachel Nichols, and she's with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Sam Young with the Maryland Theater. This is a group that gets together, the Hagerstown A&E Board. They talk about what they can do for each other, what's happening. And when we did the renewal two years ago, we had to revise the board, and so we did to the state regulations, to the state, to get a number of the organizations, main organizations, and even some that aren't in the district, like the museum, because we want everyone to be a part. And as they were getting together, one of the things that they wanted to do was create a logo. And the Washington County Arts Council stepped up and said, "We'll pay for it," and worked with Chris Brewer, who donated his time, and worked together. And he, and they have done that. So with that, I was going to have Chris talk a little bit about the logo, and then we would unveil it tonight. And we would like to get a picture of Mayor of you and Chris and the logo. And just to start, a number of awareness, awareness of the district. And also, when we completed the 2013 report, it was interesting because of the attendance. We had about 56,000 for events, 15,700 for festivals, and about 121,000 for our enterprises, which are galleries, MSO, the Arts Council showings, the Maryland Theater. So it really is a number of people coming for arts and entertainment to our city center, and we're very proud of that. And this group gets together, and it's not about, it's just how can we work together and what can we do to better it. So with that, I'm going to have Chris talk about the logo.
Thanks.
Mary Ann approached me and asked if I would be interested, and of course, I was very interested in helping out the Arts and Entertainment District. Ever since I started working at the Washington County Arts Council, I've been really impressed with the arts culture in downtown and the camaraderie and the cooperation that everyone has. And so I definitely wanted to get in on that. Karen had given me a couple of pieces of literature that they had used in the past, and I did some sketches, and then gave them several examples of different fonts, different styles, different logos. And then they narrowed that down, and we came to the conclusion of this one. It's very simple, but I think effective, and gives an overall feel for, a good feel for the, you know, the totality of all of the arts in the area.
And I failed to say that Mary Ann is the chair, and Rob Hoverbell from Bispa is our vice chair. And we, and we have a number of people with that. And Chris really came on board and helped us out, and Mary Ann would bring the ideas to us. And it's simplistic, but it really encompasses it. So with that, we'd like to unveil that.
Where will it be seen?
Well, we are going to put it on websites as we are working on awareness of A&E. Anything that says A&E, we're going to be putting this logo on.
Great. I know we have the banners that hang from the poles. Is that going to, are there going to be new banners with the new logo?
We haven't talked about that point, so that's a good idea, though, Mayor. Definitely, I think that it might be, it would lend itself to it. So tonight, we wanted to unveil it, and then we could start using it.
All right.
Okay, so with that, maybe you and Chris and Rachel and Sam could come up and unveil it.
Chris Stockslager, will you provide us a drum roll, please?
Last time it fails, so be careful.
Yeah, we won't yank it off, right?
The Blues Fest wasn't failed.
Yeah, right. Just like a magician unveiling something. Should we roll it up from the top?
I think maybe that's probably the safest.
All right, let's do it. Here we go. All right.
Chris, do you just want to point out a couple of the items that you have on it?
Yeah, we have the brush stroke, obviously, with the different colors that represents visual arts. Then we have the treble clef, dotting the i in district down here that represents music. I picked out a font here that's a little bit grungy, but, you know, be...
Tribal, we call that.
Yeah, kind of, that sort of thing, and just earthy, and a good feel for the A&E district.
Here. All right.
Can you get one for us?
Sure.
Okay, one, three, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Always a pleasure. All right. Thank you for that. And another great thing coming up is the Hagerstown Municipal Band.
And as Chris Brewer leaves, we bring Chris Stockslager up, so as one good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a exciting celebration coming up for the 100th anniversary of the municipal band. And there are some exciting things happening. Chris, do you want to invite, and you guys can sit down, to, in, just so you're represented?
Yes, we, the band has put together a 100th anniversary committee. Behind me are three representatives of that committee, Joel Guyton, Betty Sue Kitchen, and Karen Hart. Joel plays trumpet in the band, and the two ladies play clarinet. Also on the committee is Greg Shook, our principal oboist, Doris Smith, our historian, and Jeff Mussolini, also another trumpet player, and Dawn Rayner, a clarinet player. So I was the only member of the low brass that actually made the committee.
We allowed it.
Yeah.
And they have a number of exciting things happening in July. And they wanted to see how the city could be part of it. Their celebration weekend will be July 11 through the 13th. And we tossed around a number of ideas, and one of the things that we could partner, if the mayor and council would be willing, is to, that we would give a sponsorship for two different things. One is that they would like to do a picnic with current members of the band and past members of the band, and I'll let Chris talk about that. And also, a commemorative program, which they also did for the 75th as well.
Yeah.
And if the mayor and council would allow that, we would place $2,000 in the fiscal year 2015 budget, because this, of course, is happening in July. So I'll let Chris talk about the picnic and the commemorative program. And then also, if the mayor and council would allow, we'd like to help them by creating some type of video for our local access channel, and then also, we would assist them in selling sponsorships to their program.
The picnic is scheduled for Saturday afternoon, July 12. And it will be in the, one of the pavilions that's right behind the band shell. Actually, if you walk out the back door, the band shelf, just directly down to your left, that's, that big pavilion down there is what we have reserved. We kind of discussed some ideas about what we could do for the band members themselves, because we have faithful people that show up week after week and play those concerts 11 straight weeks, some with no break. Some are retired, some are coming as far away. I know at one point, we had someone as far away as Mount Airy coming up Monday, Tuesday, and Sunday nights for the performance. We thought that the 100th anniversary needed some, some sense for the player, what we were going to do for the player, because that's a big part of the 100th. The Sunday night is where we're going to gear towards the audience and the support that we receive from the community. So we thought that, like the 75th, a picnic for the members of the band would be just casual, a time to get together, see old friends that maybe you haven't seen in a long time, and also to have people back that maybe, or invite dignitaries there as well, so the band could actually socialize with the people from the city, get to know you, you get to know them, and that just makes for a better relationship. So we do have, we're trying to get people, I know Joel has put together a list of members. How far back? Good ways.
All the way back from, I took what was in the 75th booklet and then added what Lynn sent me, you know, the last 25 years. We have about 550 names right now.
Yeah. So we're going to try to contact those people. I know one, I just had lunch with Dave Bergunier on Saturday afternoon. He is the most recent retired principal tubist in the National Symphony Orchestra, graduated from South High. And he played in the band when he was in high school. So he's definitely going to be there. So we're going to just try to get people back and have the younger members talk to the retired members and just share stories. So we thought that would be the best thing.
So with this exciting anniversary coming up, we wanted to see if we could come ahead and see if the sponsorship would be amenable to the mayor and council, and if so, we would start working together on this.
Yeah. Sounds like a great idea to me. What say you, council members?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I got two thumbs up, I got two nod, okay. Five thumbs up.
And make sure it's on your calendar, because you're definitely a big part of this, and we want you there.
I'll make sure they have them mark your calendar.
Yeah, we'll make sure it gets on everybody's...
Try not to lose, isn't it?
Chris?
It's one of the enjoyable things.
Right. And it's, again, it's volunteers helping the community.
And not too many communities can say they have a municipal band that's 100 years old.
That's correct.
So it's very much a source of community pride for us.
That's correct.
And of this quality.
Yes.
It's a great quality.
And we're going to have more seats for you.
Yes.
Right, Rodney?
Yes, we saw those, and...
Stop snoring.
Yes.
Chris, your director happens to be the longest director in the band's history.
Yes.
Are you going to do anything special for him?
Yes.
Good.
And in case he's watching...
You're not going to tell us what it is?
I'm not going to talk about it, but you will know, you will know about that.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, I was taking the cat out of the bag.
Yes, but we are, we are planning something for him. We also got word, just within the last probably week and a half, that the Army Herald trumpets from Fort Meyer will be at the July 13 performance.
That's great.
So those of you that are watching the Olympics, you hear that fanfare, they were the ones that recorded that originally in 1984.
Wow.
So they will be here, and they'll play it, I'm sure, so. Yep.
That's great.
Yes, and J.J. has come, stepped up, and they are going to actually carry that concert live on the radio.
Very good.
So we're very appreciative of that.
You know, this is really an outstanding example of the pride we can have in our It's just incredible that this could be happening 100 years ago, and now it's here, and this is really something to celebrate.
Yes. And again, we thank you for your support. You were one of two organizations that got this band started in 1915. The other organization was the Chamber of Commerce. So somewhere along the line, somebody put their heads together and combined two or three bands to make one, and it's still rolling. So we want to see it roll.
Wasn't the first concert in the Maryland Theater?
Yes.
Mm-huh.
Yeah.
Looking forward to seeing you back in the refurbished Maryland Theater after it's owned.
Yeah, we're aiming that way, so.
And this would be a line in the public functions account.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is our consolidated annual financial report, known as the CAFR.
Hello, hello. It's a shame to put all the exciting stuff after the...
I know, well...
...municipal band and everything else, and now here we come with the numbers, right?
That's right. And this is rescheduled. I know we've had a couple of snow delays on this presentation.
This is very true.
Just missing another one.
You're adding to the excitement.
Just ahead of one.
Just ahead of one, exactly. I think maybe it might just be the topic in general, but now, I was sharing with them earlier that I feel like I've been so engrossed in fiscal year 15 in budget mode that I almost forgot what fiscal year 13 was, just a couple of months ago. Anyway, what I would like to do is just make a couple of quick introductions, more than just introductions, also acknowledgements. The first of which, Raina Rose is our accounting manager. I'm not sure if all of you here at the table have had an opportunity to meet or see Raina before, but she was very dedicated and instrumental in getting the audit as well as the CAFR completed. Not just her, but the entire, the entire accounting department and the team. Much thanks, of course, goes to our audit firm, SBN Company. Seated next to me is Bill Seymour, and many of you may remember him from the last couple of years. He is a licensed CPA and audit partner, so he's going to be here. He'll actually cover our audit findings, audit comments, but he'll also be available to answer questions. Within the packet, his contact information is also in there, so if you would have anything that would come up after the meeting or a few months down the road, I'm sure he wouldn't mind.
I don't know.
First, what I think we're going to do is just, I want to touch a couple of important things and key concepts. The CAFR is quite the document and is loaded with lots of detailed information, some easy to interpret and some not so easy to interpret. So I think one of the things I wanted to concentrate on is governmental funds. We talk so much about these funds. Primarily, the governmental funds derive most of our income from our taxpayer base. So within our, within our governmental funds, in fiscal year 13, 60% of our revenue came from property taxes. And this was $25.2 million, which was up slightly over our fiscal year 12 numbers. Our next largest revenue source come from charges for services and other revenues. This accounted for 21% or $9.2 million. Items within this category, some of our grants, some of our things that we charge through code administration permits, licensing, our recycling program, franchise cable is also within there. The last two categories really, one is grants and contributions for 11% or $6.1 million. And the final share of our governmental activity revenue comes from state and county shared taxes, with just 8% or $3.5 million. So that is where we received our money. Yes, I'm sorry. You should have, in your packet, there should be a couple of slides, yes, that you can follow along. So that answers one of the, one of the first questions everybody has, where do you get your money? Actually, maybe the first question they ask is, where does our money go? And that's that next... And that's that next chart on the governmental funds. The largest portion, of course, is, is no surprise, it's for public safety, 49% or just $21 million in our fiscal year 13 expenditures were spent with public safety. The next largest share there is general governmental, and that was about 24% or $9.6 million. And just, what I shared here was the snapshot, was just a couple of charts, but if you wanted to see the details, the financial statements actually start on page 16 of the CAFER. You can find a little bit more details there. From governmental funds, next we'll just touch briefly on the business type or the enterprise funds. Mostly, this is our utility funds, electric, water, wastewater, golf course, property management. No surprise here that in our business type funds, because they are largely self-supported, from user and service charges, that is where the majority of all the revenue comes from. About 93% of all the revenue, 48.2 million, was derived from charges for services for this, this group across our city funds last year. The remaining categories, we have a couple miscellaneous revenues for just 2%, but we also received 2.5 million or 5% of the revenue in capital grants and contributions. And then next to that, we have a snapshot of who and where the expenditures are spent there. I just wanted to make a quick note on the business type funds, that our total expenditures in fiscal year 13 was 52.2 million, and that was down slightly from the prior year. In fiscal year 12, we spent 52.5 million combined in the business type funds. Next, next page, I'm going to touch just briefly, because most of these items, we're either going to talk about in a little bit, or we actually shared information in detail on prior work sessions, but just wanted to, to cover police and fire pension, our Maryland State Retirement Pension, and our OPEB or other post-employment benefits. I think first and foremost, one of the primary reasons I want to discuss this and bring this to the front of our mind is, is Bill's going to cover in, in just a few minutes, there's a GASP 68 that we're going to need to implement and is going to impact us on our citywide financial statements beginning in fiscal year 15. So he'll go, he'll, he'll cover it a little bit more in detail and explain exactly how that's going to appear. But with that in mind, basically, we're going to be recording pension liabilities that we haven't had to do before. So the first of which is our police and fire pension plan. We did hear details on this plan in a December workstation, work session, when C-Biz was here, we covered that in detail. But I just wanted to make sure that we cover it one more time, that our unfunded liability was a little over 22 million, or just shy of $23 million. This number is pretty important. It, it's the number that going forwards, we're going to have to record. The other thing I want to point out in that police and fire pension plan is that our funded ratio is at 44, not quite 45%. Maryland State Retirement and Pension System, this plan, we contribute 100% of the state's required limit. We do not yet have the information on what our allocated share will be of the unfunded liability there. The state will be sending that to us. But in fiscal year 13, of our expenses, 1.3 million was spent in this specific pension. Last but not least, other post-employment benefits, primarily health insurance. And again, not to steal all Bill's glory and thunder and all the excitement of the Gaspys to come, but in future Gaspys, one of the big things that's going to be looked at is, of course, OPEB, in a way we look at unfunded liabilities, in a way we recorded in the accounting world. So I just want to bring home the fact that our unfunded liability is currently at $30.7 million. We do fund 100% of the required level. As odd as it is to say and to understand, within this plan, we are actually, we have no pension obligation. We have actually paid in more than we are required, but we still have an unfunded liability of 30.7 million. So again, with, within our CAFER, all this information starts on page 58. It's, it's very technical and sometimes hard to understand, that's why we're glad we have Bill here to help us walk through it. But I just really wanted to stress a couple of these key things. And then just last, on OPEB, our funded ratio is just 9.73%, which is incredible. And then finally, one of the last things I wanted to touch on was one of the key funds on the governmental side is our general funds, the ones that's so reliant on our taxpayer, taxpayer base and our citizens. And just kind of walk back through, I know that we had covered this in a couple of the other work sessions, I had brought some preliminary information on our surplus and shared that information with you, but just to give us a snapshot comparison, in fiscal year 13, in the general fund only, our total revenues were about $1.4 million better than our budget. And again, primarily, this had to do with multiple programs. One was property taxes did better than we anticipated, and we had a little bit more income tax. And then also, the implementation, the full implementation of our Safe Speed for School Program. On the expenditure side, we were about $300,000 over budget. The reason that we were over budget was because one of the things that we did when we knew we were anticipating a surplus as I came, and we had that almost checklist of items and things to look at, one of the things we did was went ahead and funded monies into the CIP to pay for patrol vehicles, and we did that out of our fiscal year 13. That was not an original budget item, that was 210,000. So those things that we had went through and covered in prior sessions that we were going to do, and monies that we were going to utilize, that is really what's driving that $300,000 expenditure difference in our budget. Without those items, we would have been under budget by about 30,000. Fund balance. Just, just to kind of mention in general, fund balance. The city policy, we have a target of 10% of total expenditures or 1.2 months. That means we have enough reserves on hand that if something catastrophic were to occur, we could cover expenditures up to 1.2 months. That's our policy. GFOA, best practices, is 16.67% or two months reserve. So in saying all that, if you take a look at our fund balance in the middle of the, of the page, we have 2 million, and this again is just in our fund, 2 million in all of the committed fund balances, in either non-spendable, restricted, committed, or assigned. This just means that 2 million has already been committed and obligated somewhere else, and we are not able to spend that. The rest is in unassigned fund balance, and that's at 7.7 million. That's down slightly from fiscal year 12, it was 7.8 million. So at the end of 13, our total fund balance is 9.7 million. So our unassigned portion is the portion we do the calculation on, is what we have available, available to spend. And that, you see the numbers below, about 21.6% or just a little over 2.6 months worth of expenditures. And I just want to note, in the past, you know, our rating agencies have looked at that, our fund balance and our fund balance reserves, and, and they have indicated that one of our strengths revolved around our fund balance reserve, our fiscal policies, and our adherence to those. With that said, I'm going to turn this all over, I think Raina's going to turn on the presentation, and I'm going to let Bill take it away and go over the audit and some of the comments and looking forwards to the future.
Okay, great. All right, great. Well, thank you very much. Good evening. Bill Seymour, engagement partner with S B and Company. Everybody should have in front of them a package that has a cover page of this. I was going to start on page two, which is our scope of services. And as I go through this, I'm going to be fairly high level. Please feel free at any time to stop me if any questions that you may have. The scope of services, we were engaged performing, we did perform an audit of the June 30th, 2013 financial statements. Performance of the O and B Circular A133 Single Audit, that is a federal grants compliance audit. We performed certain agreed upon procedures. Review of the Uniform Financial Report, that is a report that management submits to the Maryland Department of Legislative Services. It basically takes the CAFER and puts it into a form for them. The data collection form, which goes along with the single audit, and then working with management on a year-round basis. The results of our audit is we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. This is what we used to call unqualified. There are recently some new audit standards that have changed the verbiage from unqualified to unmodified. Is still the best opinion that we're allowed to issue under generally accepted auditing standards, and effectively says that the financial statements are reasonably free of material misstatement. We noted no material weaknesses in internal controls underlying the financial reporting process. We did not discover any instances of fraud, and we received the full cooperation of management. From the industry update, as Michelle mentioned earlier, there's GASP 67 and 68, which is a pretty significant item for governments that will require the recordation of pension liabilities on the financial statements, and we have some slides that will go through that. There are some other gap changes, GASP 63 and 65. On your entity-wide financial statements, we no longer use the term net assets, we now use the term net position. And there is a concept of deferred inflows and outflows. That is kind of in a non-accounting terms. We have a concept of deferred revenue. Basically, what the idea is, is that GASP wanted to really separate what are, if you will, real assets, real liabilities that will be settled in cash, versus what are the assets, what are the liabilities that will be settled through the income statement? And kind of just to separate the two as a larger ongoing project that they're looking at the entire reporting model. This will have a number of changes that will be effective over the next couple of years. However, we don't think any of them will have a real material effect on the city's financial statements, other than some nomenclature changes on the face of the statements, as well as some changes in footnote disclosures. Moody's recently has issued their own reporting requirements on pension disclosure. They will have their own model that they're using a static discount rate that's tied to a borrowing rate, whereas under GASP 68 and under current standards, you're allowed to use a discount rate that's commensurate with your investment return. If you will, Moody's discount rate is lower than what you would use, therefore, your current liability will be higher. That being said, they're doing this across the board for all government, state and local governments that have pensions, and thereby, so if you will, it's not like the city's going to be unfairly judged in this. The current, current effects of the economic condition, the current, the continued kind of battles that happen in, in DC, as well as the state over budgets, and the effect of how problems appear to be pushed to a smaller level than to a smaller level, and then, you know, ultimately, funding is squeezed to cities and smaller municipalities, or when funding is transferred, they transfer so much of the burden of transparency with it that it almost becomes too cost burdensome to do the work. There is a, the SEC finalized a municipal advisor rule. This was a rule that would have, for trustees of public pension plans, would have required certain disclosures. They have exempted state and local governments from that, so it's a good thing. One other item to note is the, in current negotiations in DC, we've seen or read discussions of, one of the ways that Congress may help promote state and local governments to fund pensions, and OPEB is by tying funding to the ability to issue tax-exempt debt, and potentially removing that if you're not fully funding your pensions, which, as Michelle mentioned earlier, would not necessarily apply to you, even though if you look at the funding levels, wouldn't necessarily, you would see that immediately. So just something to keep an eye on there. And lastly, the Market Fair, Marketplace Fairness Act, which is a sales tax on internet sales, if you will, to protect smaller, small and paw type stores from, big box stores that are able to do, you know, free shipping, and then you don't have to pay taxes because they don't have domicile here in Maryland. On page four is just an update on some of the upcoming accounting pronouncements. As I mentioned earlier, GASP 68 is the kind of 800-pound gorilla. The other ones will have some minor effects, but nothing that we see is really major. Page five is a pictorial of our risk-based audit approach. Effective the idea behind the audit approach is we focus on the risk of material misstatement, how management has designed and operated controls to mitigate that risk, doing certain testing, ultimately to be able to issue the unmodified opinion. And with that, on page six, what we do is we assess the control environment, and looking at the five interrelated components of, that are set by the COSO model, which is the, the underlying control environment, risk assessment, control activities, monitoring, and information and communication. And related to both the financial statement and financial reporting process, as well as grant compliance, our assessment was effective. The evaluation of key processes, this is the, on page seven, the underlying processes and function as they relate to the financial statements. Once again, and this has been what we've found historically with the city, that all areas we thought were designed effective and operating effective. Now, this doesn't mean that bad things don't happen and won't happen, but how the, the city responds to those items when they do happen. And, you know, getting through the audit process, you know, I would say that, you know, from history, working with the city, we were a little, time-wise, a little lag, but then I think there were some extenuating circumstances, and, you know, management really stepped up and was able to get through the numbers and be able to get us through the audit from our standpoint still in a very good fashion. On page eight is some high-level numbers, this is the entity-wide numbers, and the, on the entity-wide basis, is kind of a full accrual, if you will, what the city looks like as a whole. I won't go through the numbers in detail on those, but you'll see, and there was nothing from an audit perspective that we found that was, if you will, abnormally risked, or we had abnormal issues getting through. On page nine is the income statement for both governmental activities and business-type activities. Now, page 10, with GASP 67 and 68, there's some key changes in accounting. The first, as alluded to earlier, is the idea of the employer liability. Currently, the accounting is one of a funding basis. And the idea basically is that if you're a good corporate citizen and you make your annual required contributions, if you will, over the course of that employee's timeframe, you're going to fully fund it, so there would never really be a true liability. Unfortunately, if you look at what has happened as a result of the downturn in the market of 2008, that model doesn't necessarily pick up that, what is the true liability that the city has. So as a result of that, GASP has taken and, and now gone to a more accounting-based model that is similar to what private sector companies would, would use, what we would commonly term as FAS 158 liabilities. And what that is, is basically where they take the discounted total pension liability that the actuary calculates, subtract the fiduciary net position, or if you will, what your investments that you have today to calculate the net pension liability, or if you have assets over liabilities, you could have a net pension asset. They've tied down some of the guidance and the different actuarial methods that you're allowed to use. The discount rate, this is one area that was, has some potential significant effects in that what GASP is requiring is that if the plan will, and the actuary will determine this, if the plan is scheduled to run out of money. In other words, if you're not fully funding your annual required contribution, at some point in the future, there's going to be a tipping point where the plan would run out of money, and then it would be basically pay-go for the city or the municipality to pay that. That portion of the liability would have to be discounted at a borrowing rate, which is significantly lower than where your, your investment return would be, which in turn would make that liability higher. Now, what the actuary is looking at is two parts. One is what is the assets that you currently have in the plan? What is the age of the plan? And what is your history of fully funding that annual required contribution? If you will, if you look at the history, you've, you know, basically fully funded, that, so what the actuary is going to say is, we can predict, if you will, that the city will do that. Now, if the city begins to not fully fund it in future periods, the actuary may go back through and say, well, wait a minute, now I can't say that this thing's going to be fully funded, therefore, we'll have to use a lower discount... fully funded, therefore, we'll have to use a lower discount rate, which will in turn make that liability higher and, and going from there. The other item is the cost-sharing plans. The, the city has participated in the state of Maryland Retirement System Plan. They're going to allocate the unfunded liability based upon what your contribution share is of the total contributions that are retired, for that plan. So, if you will, the, I think it was $1.3 million.
That we spent.
The $1.3 million that you contributed for the plan last year, let's say that the, all of the municipalities contributed $100 million, well, basically, you would have 1.3% of the total cost-sharing plan of all municipalities, their unfunded liability. So, if their unfunded liability is a billion dollars, then you would have 1% of a billion dollars, or $10 million, if I'm doing my math correct. That would be there, and all that information is going to come from the state. One of the items, and then kind of, if you will, what is the real picture today if we had implemented 68? And these are kind of rough numbers. Currently, your net position is roughly about $247 million. Now, of that $247 million, $220 million roughly is tied up in fixed assets. So, your unrestricted net position is about $26 million. That's on the face of the statements. The pension, as Michelle mentioned earlier, the unfunded liability is $23 million. We don't know what the cost-sharing plan is, so let's assume that it's $20 million, and that's just a guess. So, that would be a $43 million liability that would be recorded on the entity-wide statements, that would turn that unrestricted balance of $26 million into a deficit or negative balance. Now, rating agencies, all of this, aside from the, the cost-sharing plan, all of the information has already been included in the financial statements, all of this information is, you know, when somebody looks at the city for credit worthiness, none of this, if you will, is new news for somebody. It's just being presented in a different light that makes it a little bit more, if you will, transparent on what the city's ongoing liabilities will be on a entity-wide basis. This does not affect your fund-level statements.
So, if I could, so Bill just covered numbers, and if you look in the CAFR in the front, like on page four, you'll see our $27 million he was referring to in total unrestricted. That's across the entire city. That's our current unassigned fund balance. And again, a large portion of that is on the utility side, so that would no longer show in that manner. It would now be this negative number. And it would actually show here in these financials. So, like at the bottom of page four.
And then the, as Michelle mentioned earlier, there is currently a Gatsby project underway for other post-employment benefits. That's basically, our understanding is that they're going to take Gatsby 68, cross out pensions, put in other post-employment benefits. It's going to be a similar literature. So, if, you know, if that fell, holds true, there would be an additional $31 million liability. Now, what's keeping in mind, and where I think the city and where I would imagine that bond rating agencies would give you an uptick for is, what is your funding plan for OPEB? And the fact that you have overfunded on the ARC is a good thing, because that's going to allow that actuary to say, you know what? This thing will be fully funded over time, and therefore, we'll be able to use a higher discount rate, which will help keep that liability lower for that. Contrast that with the state of Maryland, who is not fully funding their OPEB responsibilities. They're going to have to use a, potentially have to use a lower discount rate, which will make their, that liability significantly higher for there. So, just one of the items, and it's a, it's a major item that's occurring, and this is effective for the 2015 year. Gatsby 67 will affect separately issued pension statements in the 2014 year. On page 13 starts our specific required communications. I'm going to summarize these. This is our opportunity to talk to you about what our responsibilities are, if we have, you know, significant problems, if management had selected really questionable accounting or, you know, aggressive or, you know, had misapplied it. We had none of those items. During the course of the audit, we had one unadjusted entry that management decided to pass on, which was really more a classification item on the OPEB expense for approximately $387,000. It wasn't one where the information that was underlying the statements was incorrect. It was more so just a financial reporting item. It was immaterial to the financial statements, but it was over our insignificant level, so it's required to bring it to your attention. We noted no fraud or illegal acts. There was no material weaknesses. We noted no disagreements with management, no serious difficulties. We received a management representation letter as part of the audit. We can provide you a copy of one if you would like it. We noted no consultation with other accountants, i.e. opinion shopping, and we are independent and of the city. We go through a process on an annual basis to ensure that. And then on page 19 is our contact information. Please feel free at any time during the course of the year to call us if you ever have questions, comments, concerns, anything that we can be helpful with. It's all part of the audit. We like to be, work with you during the year, not just during the audit time. Makes our job actually a lot easier. It's not one of those items, if you pick up the phone and you call us, that you're going to get a bill. It's part of our, part of our audit fee and working with the city to make sure that we continue to provide you the service. I know it went high-level and fast through that. I didn't know if there was any specific questions I can answer for any of the members.
So, we get an A, right?
Yes. I can't write that because I'm an auditor, but yes.
Where's Rodney with his red pen now?
Good job.
Can you, can you go back to number four under the required communications? Management passed on an entry to record a reduction in the OPEB expense for approximately $387,000 on the government-wide financial statements. That's pretty vague and...
Well, what it is, on your, it's a difference in accounting on the fund-level statements and the entity-wide statements. On your fund-level statements, when you make an expenditure, it is an expense. On your entity-wide statements, the amount that's in excess of what the required contribution is would be considered an asset for entity-wide purposes. So, what it is, is management had decided, if you will, to show less assets, which is a conservative position, given the overall estimate that is the actuarial calculation and the annual required contribution. It's not material to the financial statements. It wouldn't otherwise affect our opinion in, in the statements, but as I mentioned, we have to bring it to your attention only because it's, you know, it's not material, but it's, we have stages of materiality, if you will. You know, if something has a dollar, we wouldn't talk to you about, but this is kind of a large enough item that we wanted to tell you or required to tell you, but not large enough that we had to otherwise change our opinion.
So, management had the ability to show it two different ways. They chose to show it one way versus another?
Correct.
All right.
And just to clarify on something like that, that's where Michelle and Raina have conversations with the auditors, and they talk to me, and we work together to decide how to present that.
Correct. And we're working out process changes and procedure changes going forward as well. Continual improvements.
Yeah, well, and, and I would want to make sure that I don't, you know, sometimes you hear the term pass audit adjustment, and you think, oh, this is a huge issue. This is really a, a judgment and a, how management chose to...
Account for it.
Account, account for it, and it's, it's an acceptable, because of the balance and acceptable method, that would be there. But if you went to say, here's the absolute, technically, you know, what, the way it should be to the dollar, it would have been done differently. And as I said, that's what we're required to tell you. It's not a, you know, this isn't a, one where it's like, ooh, wait a minute, we know that, or we made a mistake and now we're trying to shuffle it on the rug. This is more of an active decision-making process that was made.
Is that a sum that could be carried to a future year? Can reduce the liability in the future year?
It would, the annual requir, in two ways, yes, because the annual required contribution, the actuary would go through and say that your annual required, and I'm making up numbers at this point, is $4 million, say, for next year, and you could fund $3.6 million because you could use that additional amount.
That's my question.
He already dumped that.
That, that would be there.
Well, we're carrying, yeah, we're carrying that over. We could reduce and still be on many of our OPEB requirements.
Oh, yes, yes.
Which I understand, a lot of municipalities have not done, not just the state of Maryland.
Yeah, a lot of them have no funded their OPEB, other than the current pay-go requirement of current beneficiaries.
And you all, of course, don't make judgments on the strength of the, or the plan by which we're paying up down our pension liabilities. Let's say the police and fire. You look and see if we budgeted enough to meet the liability, not whether that liability's adequate in the first place.
Actually, what we would do is we look at the calculations that are done for the liability that are performed by the actuary, looking at the assumptions that they use, the information that was provided to the actuary, the qualifications of the actuary, as well as we would do some high-level tests of our own to say, you know, is that liability a reasonable estimate based upon the facts and circumstances of the city? Once, whether, what the city decides to fund to the plan from a audit and accounting perspective, and, you know, as long as it's, the facts of what you actually did or what's reported here is where our responsibility would end. So, in other words, if you decide to fund zero, that's what's going to show up in the financial statements. If you decide to fund 10 times what the requirement, what the actuary says, that's what will show up in the financial statements. The decision on whether to do it or not, other than, if you will, you're the city of Detroit in the middle of bankruptcy, wouldn't otherwise affect our opinion.
But would you be obliged to say, as a warning or a notice, the numbers all add up, but you don't think it's enough money to adequately finance the pension or retirement liability? Would you make that as a note, a management note?
If, if you were, I think from a practical perspective, if you were not funding the pension annual required contribution, and you were not funding the OPEB required contribution, we would have that as a point to say, you're not doing this, and here are what the consequences of doing that are. Not funding the pension and the OPEB is actually really expensive debt, because your discount rate is seven or eight, 7.25%, or you can borrow money a lot less than seven and a quarter percent. So, if you will, every year that you don't meet that funding requirement, what happens is that, you know, that, you have the compounding of interest, and you're, every year, that ARC will get higher and higher and higher and higher and higher, and that's what we would bring to your attention if that were the case.
Item number five, fraud and illegal acts. There is a statement in here that says, "Are required to report the city's oversight body any fraud and illegal acts involving senior management and fraud and illegal acts that cause a material misstatement of the financial statements." Is the boundaries for which you report on this audit strictly confined to any material misstatements or of the financial statement? In other words, you're looking for strictly actions that apply to the budget itself, the audit itself?
What it is that we're looking at is not necessarily the budget, but rather, starting with the financial statements and the document that's included in, and all the numbers that go along in the footnotes and so on, that we're looking at that. Fraud and looking at the process that's there is a, a lot of times, there's a misnomer of what the financial statement auditor's responsibility is for that. You know, if you will, a fraud audit would be completely different in scope. You know, if you will, what we do is we look for it to say, is there something, are the controls so broken that, that fraud could be perpetrated and never be detected? That doesn't mean, the two parts, and I mentioned this earlier, is that controls work on a multitude of levels. You have a specific control activity, a bank reconciliation that's performed, but then you would have, you know, you have a monitoring function as well, which would say, we're looking at budget to actual, we're looking at other areas, such that you could have an error that occurs here that's undetected, that then is caught elsewhere, and then actions are taken. Unfortunately, sometimes things that happen is people are put in positions of authority and may make questionable decisions that are otherwise caught during the process. Well, if the controls and through that process, that kind of triangle, if you will, then it becomes, and none of the items were, are material to the statements and not even at our, what we would term insignificant, our insignificant levels for reporting in the numbers. And I think there's a, there's a big difference between what's, you know, is discussed from a, here and what, from a financial statement and what the comfort is. But the response that the city had in going through when errors are found, we thought was actually a testament to the control process that was here. As I said, you know, unfortunately, you're not always going to have controls that are going to prevent bad things from happening, from, from everything. A lot of times, it's in what the response is once, once those items are detected.
Any other questions or feedback?
Well, the only feedback, again, I've said this many times, but Hagerstown has kept its funding. It's done responsible financing through different administrations, through different finance directors, through Bruce's term here, and through a lot of hardship and facing a lot of things. And a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of places would be tempted to take shortcuts that the public doesn't see until much later. That's what a lot of these Gadsby and Fasby and all the other things are trying to nail.
Right.
And, and make more transparent and harder to do, or at least reveal what they're doing. But, and the other thing we haven't done is, we haven't strapped the extra expenses on the backs of, of our employees on the benefit side. You know, we have a good retirement program, and we're fully funding it, and we're fully funding it, so the money will be there. And once again, this just reinforces that. The OPEB, that's keeping us in good shape, so the bottom doesn't drop out, you know, a few years from now. So, we're meeting our responsibilities. We face enormous financial pressures right now, but we're starting from a sound base. So, you know, it, there's a lot, and people don't realize what all the city's picking up in meeting those responsibilities financially.
And one other item, just to add, Michelle mentioned earlier, the relatively low funding percentage for OPEB, and keeping in mind that OPEB wasn't required to be even accounted for like a pension until 2010. So, you've only had a couple of years to even get the funding process started. So, if you will, even though the plan's been around for a while, it is very young from an accounting perspective.
Well, thank you for this thorough view.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just acknowledge Raina and Michelle, for both working long evenings and weekends, it's not easy to get this together, and they've done it very, very... and weekends, it's not easy to get this together, and they've done it very, very well. And then just acknowledge for the mayor and council, you've had budget workshops through the fall, you had Lester Guthorn, our financial advisor, in in January to talk about bond financing and debt service. You had the pension presentation earlier this year. So, I think, kind of speaking of what Councilmember Brubaker is saying, I think the mayor and council are doing a very good job of staying in touch in terms of our finances as well. And Bill's presentation here this evening is certainly part of that.
And we have another one following us. She's in the back.
Thank you very much.
Raina, congratulations on this.
Oh, thank you.
You, it's, so the public knows, it's numbers from beginning to end. You must have a high tolerance for boredom.
Next item on our agenda is recommendations for health care changes for July 1, 2014.
Hi.
Greetings.
Greetings. Before we really dig in, I do want to take a moment to recognize Margie Moats, who's with us this evening in the audience. She's a member of the health care committee, so we thank her for her service on that committee, as well as being here this evening. The health care committee itself is comprised of representatives from all five employee groups, plus retirees, and the recommendations that we're bringing forward to you this evening do come from the committee. So, it's been several years since any significant changes to the health care plans have been made, and last, I guess, the current fiscal year, fiscal year 1314, the city did absorb an 11% increase in expenses. And looking at the projected increase for the next fiscal year, we're looking at an additional 13% on top of that. So, the health care program is a very valuable piece of an employee's total compensation package. So, I guess the past several months, the committee's been looking at different areas of way to kind of mitigate that increase, to make it slightly more affordable than the double-digit increase we were projecting. And of those discussions, and some of them lively at times, we do come forward tonight with four of those recommendations. The first is actually very similar to the dental vendor change we did last year. We looked at the vendor itself. CBIZ put the vendor services out to bid. We did get four viable responses, and of those, two are in current incumbent care first, and then United Healthcare were serious contenders and provided the least amount of disruption. So, United Healthcare did get favorable references. They can also offer very similar services with minimal provider disruption for considerable savings. The savings is approximately $300,000 over a three-year period. We did distribute lists of providers who are participating in both networks for each employee group to review and take a look at. There were some on United Healthcare that don't participate in our current plan, and vice versa. There's some that currently participate through Blue Cross that don't participate through United Healthcare. And, you know, at any point in time of, sorry, a provider can choose to participate or not participate in a particular network. So, just because they're on a list at one particular point in time doesn't guarantee they'll continue to offer services. So, if mayor and council are favorable to the change in administration, we would also need to move the prescription administration from Express Scripts to United Healthcare. It is a package deal. This change would also bring an additional savings of about $40,000. And on this change, the biggest impact, there's some differences in terms of drug tiers, and basically, a tier is how a drug is classified. If it's, you know, tier one, two, or three, a generic formulary or non-formulary drug, and depending on where it's placed, dependent, you know, basically comes, calculates the amount of co-pay that the person would pay. I would say there are some brand names that are currently not considered a generic that would be offered as a generic under United Healthcare. There are some drugs that are considered a generic that would go to a higher tier. So, that would be the biggest impact participants would see there.
We also are looking at eliminating the 50% co-pay that our plan currently has on the prescription drug plan, so everybody would go to a straight tiering of prescription drugs, making it a little bit easier. It was very cost-effective when we rolled it out in 2006, but it's not as cost-effective any longer.
Right. It's just, it's harder for folks to understand, you know, up to a certain amount, you pay a set amount of co-pay, and then between this amount and this amount.
No donut hole, is what you're saying?
No donut hole. It gets rid of that. It goes straight, straight co-pay regardless of the amount of prescription expense.
If somebody has prescribed a medicine by a doctor, ultimately, somebody else is going to try to push, I'm specifically talking about pills, push those people into generics. Now, some people really can't take generics, they just can't.
Yes.
Is there a way, under this plan, that they can continue getting the original prescription?
We, we currently have step therapy in our plan, and that will continue.
I'm sorry.
Step therapy means that they will prescribe a generic first, but if somebody has been taking a name brand, then there are ways to work through it to get your doctor's approval to be able to get that drug. We currently have that in place, and that will continue with the new vendor.
And ultimately, the plan design isn't changing. It's still a deductible then covered under, under the scenario. It's, it's a vendor, very similar to how we did it with the dental last year. And then the final recommendation actually deals with the PLUS plan. It's changing the deductible for the individual from $2,000 to $1,500. And in addition to that, the city currently provides $500 into a health savings account, and a savvy employee will take the difference they're saving in the premiums between the PLUS plan and the level plan, and put it in tax-free to the health savings account to make up basically the whole deductible for the year. And also, the other, only other change with that particular plan would be the out-of-network would go to a 70% coinsurance.
And we have one more change.
And then the, sorry, the out-of-pocket maximum for the level plan. Due to the Affordable Care Act, basically, prescriptions and some other expenses now count towards that out-of-pocket maximum, so it didn't make any sense to leave it where it is. So, we are recommending a slight increase to that. And basically, the only, I mean, most folks, when they use the insurance on the level plan, they're paying their deductible if they're going in network, and then they're covered. This would mostly affect those who are going out of network. They're going to hit that out-of-pocket maximum faster, or if they have high prescription drug costs.
The out-of-pocket maximum will also apply to the under-65 retiree plan. That would be a change for them. And the committee did evaluate if they wanted to make any changes to the Medicare-eligible plans, and they decided that it would be a hardship, and they wanted to leave those plans alone. No changes to it.
So, by going to, by taking what your proposal is, we save how much money?
We're going down from, we're going from 13% down to 8.9%, so it's several hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, it's still an increase.
It's an increase.
Still have an increase.
Did you, did you mention 300,000? Was that your?
That, that was just for changing vendors. That's the first part.
Okay, but what roughly is, is the entire number?
I'm going to say it's close to, since it's 890 projected, we're probably looking at saving around $400,000.
Well, congratulations. I mean, this is all taxpayer money we're talking about, right?
Yes.
So, this is a good piece of work on behalf of the taxpayers.
But we'd like to be able to get your nod of approval, if possible, because we want to go ahead and notify United Healthcare and start working on changes, if we can.
And communicating the changes to the employees, because that does take some time.
It's going to be a big project.
And the committee supports this change? Has their recommendation?
It is. We were, we were sent here on behalf of the committee.
We took a vote, we, we've been going through this over the past several months with the committee and, and approaching different changes, and these were the changes that everyone approved.
Now, as you go through this transition, there's going to be some rough spots, undoubtedly, and you're going to be working with particular individuals who...
It's a big transition. We'll do a lot of communications. We'll, we'll be working closely with United Healthcare. We'll bring them on-site as well to meet with people, but it will be a lot of written communications to both active employees and our retirees in order to get this change in place. Because you've got prescription drugs that change, but we, you know, you do a lot of specific notifications to help them through that transition.
Again, good job.
Good work. Any other questions or feedback? Do we have approval, then, for them to?
Yep.
Any objections?
And just to clarify on the increase, we're not recommending the employees pick up any of that increase.
Correct.
That's 8% that the city's picking up.
But the city will pick that up.
At least under the current plan.
And we should acknowledge Susan on this kind of stuff, because she's well-known in the organization. Everybody calls Susan whenever they have questions on health insurance. Not, not that Karen doesn't know it, but Susan's our benefits person.
She is our resident expert on benefits.
So, so we all, we all know Susan when we, when we get confused on this stuff. So, her phone will, will get even busier.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Little ahead of schedule tonight. Next item is our Housing and Neighborhoods Legislation Update. Welcome back, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Staff reached out to Mr. Boyer. He's, he's made changes as discussed last week, and based upon last week, there was the, the one remaining decision point, and that, that decision point revolves around whether or not the certification, the residential operator certification could be lost if someone were to achieve a chronic nuisance status due to code violations. And staff are here, if you have any questions.
Right, I believe we had a tie of sorts, so I know, I think Mr. Brubaker's been briefed on which item he has to break a tie on, so what say you, Mr. Brubaker?
You know, I guess, you know, I'd like to cut the baby a different way, maybe a little bit, because I understand that we had a consensus, if I understand this correctly, not to publish a notice or compile a list of the chronic violators. Is that the correct term?
The, the direction we received last week, sir, was to publish a list of people who achieve chronic nuisance status, provided they achieve that status via the qualifying HPD calls.
The crime.
But not, not from a code administration standpoint.
So, on the code side, not only are we under this, we would not be, they would not be able to lose their certification, their, their license, so to speak, under the code section, if you went that way, but they wouldn't have their names published either, just the crime free. So, so the code violations, somebody has this whole skate of code violations. They're noticed in our record as chronic violators, but they neither have their names published, nor do they have their license, a threat, of their certifications being suspended. Is that correct?
That's, I would say...
Neither one, on the code side.
Well...
That is correct, but they're still subject to the penalties.
Of $100, $100. I understand that. But so, on the code side, we're, we're doing neither, and on the crime side, we're doing both. So, I guess, you know, to me, what I think I'd like to see, and I've thought about this a lot, is to start out with, try it without having them lose their license, but publish those names, and publish the names of banks that are holding foreclosed properties on the, on the code side. And keep good records, and come back in a year and see how many, give us a good overview of how many code violations there were that, you know, that met your standards and were exactly what they were. Were they trivial? Were they major? Because, you know, if I decide to go along with not doing it, I really wonder whether it's enough. I really wonder. And, but I don't want to be unreasonable, because I think some of the code violations don't equate to the same as one of the criminal violations. Where the qualified, what's, what's the jargon? Qualified incident?
A qualified incident for the crimes.
Qualified incident, yes, I shouldn't say.
And that was a discussion, the discussion last week, was that they felt, some of the members felt that the crime carried a little bit larger weight than the, than the code when it came to publishing the list.
Well, I do, except again, I'm torn, because I do agree with Penny, the broken windows theory, you know. And what we're, what we're after here is quality neighborhoods and improving the neighborhoods. It's not get the landlords, or it's not chase people. It's trying to improve the neighborhoods. So, so again, I guess, I, I would like to see, but I know it's, it was three to one, so there wouldn't be a swing vote, but, you know, I would like to see the, the code violators published. It's, it's, you know, one of these things, and I know, and, you know, some people think that won't have an effect, but, but I tend to think it might. I tend to think it might, you know. Geez, my rental company's in the paper here, you know, whatever, my owner. So, I, you know, I know that the, the paper, you know, could, I guess, issue public information notices, but that means you guys would have to do a chit-sheek to remember to do that every year. But, no, I don't want to make light of this. It's, it's tough. It's people's lives, it's their enterprises, but it's also our citizens, you know, and what they can do.
But on the question of losing your rental license for code violations, are you for or against that?
I'm debating it. I'm telling you, I'd like to see some, I'd like to see a vote change so we, so we publish those names, because it seems to me on the code side, we're doing almost nothing, and on the, the, the crime side, we're, you know, we're following through. But, but I think, as I said, I kind of agree with Penny, with the broken window theory, it's just that I don't think that that still constitutes as serious a thing as many of these criminal violations. So, you know, I, I really wish we could revisit that. Well, for now, for now, you know, I'm, I'm going to go along with, you know, the, the not requiring it for the code violations, but I would like a good report. I'd like you to come back after a year and brief us on where we are and do we have to do more? Six months? And where we, every six months, and where we are and how it's coming together? Because I'll tell you what, if, if, if this doesn't appear, I mean, I'd be willing to go the extra mile, but I'd like to see more data and see it develop, but let's pass the first part, and not give up on the second part. I want to see how people do and what the responses are, and I hope the rest of us are worth, worth considering this again. And on the code side, I'm talking about. I understand, and that's why I'm agreeing. I say, six months, we can see... But I think, I think when we revisit, we should, we should consider publishing it, you know. But I can't change that vote, guess?
I think that, that brings us to a final decision point, or did we cover, we covered that? So, I do want to mention that, you know, Nancy Allen of the Penmar Realtors Association reached out to us after last week's meeting. I do have a meeting set up with them and staff next Tuesday, so, you know, we continue to get feedback from folks in the community, and, you know, but we, we do still have this on for the 25th for approval.
Yeah, we introduced them in January, so. So, John, Chief Holtzman, Mark, everybody clear on what the council's saying on the decision points?
Technical question. You and I talked a little bit earlier, but I want to make clear. You took out trash and rubbish as one of the violations that would be counted for the purposes of these, amassing these members. for the purposes of these, amassing these numbers.
Yes, there's, there's basically three code sections that are in here. It's the sanitation ordinance, which is if people have trash and that's scattered about their properties.
Yeah.
It's weeds, and we specified just weeds generally on the property. It's not if you have weeds in your sidewalk, but this is serious overgrowth of weeds on the property. And then nuisance abatement, which that's our, those are weed and sanitation violations that rise to the level where we're actually going to send a contractor out to clean up the property.
One of the problems was the typical issue of foreclosed properties in which the owner of the property has moved out, because the bank doesn't want the responsibilities. They haven't changed the deed yet. So what you could have is you can have fine owners who, through unfortunate circumstances, aren't there. The deed's still in their name, but for all intents and purposes, the bank is the owner, and they get three weed notices, and the next thing you know, the homeowner, who doesn't even have any connection with the property, is the one listed in the newspaper, is being the person who's got these violations, or gets the violations otherwise.
But we're just publishing crime-free, though.
No, I mean, even, even without the newspaper, though, as far as putting them in, how do you assess them against the owner who isn't there?
One thing we could do administratively, because we note when we're at a property, if the property's in foreclosure, the inspectors check the judiciary case search.
Good.
If there's an active foreclosure, we can, if the council directed us to publish a list for foreclosures, we could publish the, the bank, as opposed to publish the owner of record in ESTAT.
Well, that's what I said. I think we should publish a list, including the banks. That's what I meant. Mark it. You look puzzled, that's what I meant.
I didn't look puzzled. There is a lender on the District Board document tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 for a weed at grass situation, or they foreclosed it. I actually take a note of it.
Well, do the banks actually show up?
Rarely. I occasionally get a call from them.
Again, I think we have been over backwards to try to be fair in, in this matter, and try to find a way through this. And I, I think, you know, like all Solomonic decisions, that's not the right word, but decisions of Solomon, you know, it's, you don't please everybody. Probably don't please anybody. But I think we're, we're cutting our way through it, and a number of council members did a lot of hard work on this, besides staff, so. But I don't think we're done with it. I don't think we're done with it. So I don't want the people that were in here en masse to think that, you know, nothing's going to happen. We're going to watch. That's what I think we ought to do, so I want good staff reports on what's happening.
When you say we're not done with it, you mean, we're going to continue to monitor the implementation after we pass it?
Yes, after we pass the bill. We're going to pass the bill, yeah. What I meant was, we're not done with dealing with this issue.
Right, I agree.
That's what I meant. It'd be nice if we were.
No, I wish we were.
Because we didn't have to. That's what I mean by that.
It would be nice that way, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Staff would concur, sir.
Right, we would all agree.
Well, thanks again for your continued work on this, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to...
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Seeing it in a couple of weeks. Well, that brings us to city administrators' comments.
Just one is, we've said it in prior weeks, I'd like to say tonight, Public Works is obviously having a winter that we'll all remember, and we're gearing up again for Wednesday night, Thursday morning, and throughout the day on Thursday, so I want to acknowledge Eric Dainke and his staff, as well as staff from Parks and Utilities, because we are making this an organization effort here, and we're getting good support from utility personnel, as well as parks, and that's much appreciated. That's it for me.
I'll start over to my left, Mr. Munson.
I'd just like to echo that. Apparently, Thursday's going to be pretty bad, and our workers, the people that, where the pedal really meets the metal, have worked around the clock to keep the, keep the city in as good a shape as possible, including electric, and, I mean, it's nice to have lights, and heat, and the roads, and, and sewage, and all the others. And how much we appreciate their work. It's awfully uncomfortable working out there in zero temperatures, with the wind blowing, and just say thank you, and thank you for the work that they're going to have to do come Wednesday night and Thursday, and perhaps Friday.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, I didn't get a chance, because I wasn't here last week, to mention the coalition. I'm sure maybe some other, the mayor and some other council members talked about it, but the, the community coalition was in Annapolis the week before last, and I thought we had a good chance to, once again, meet with the legislative leadership, with the, many other officials there. A number of us met with subcommittee leaders and committee chairman, and discussed local issues, and they do remember. They do remember from year to year. So we get down there, and we get our act together, and get a good request from the state. I think it'll help the city, not just the region. And again, they're always impressed that we were enough together as a community to go down there as a body, because they'll constantly say how amazed. They don't see that almost anywhere else, that, you know, that group coming down. And I thought the, the reception went very well. It was classy, looked good. A lot of private vendors there, and I thought it went very well. So all in all, I think it was a pretty successful day, other than the mayor and Kristen and I sitting in traffic jams. We lost...
Four hours.
Four hours in traffic jams, yeah.
That's pretty bad. But we had good conversation.
Right. When you guys weren't on your electronic stuff, we had a good conversation.
I never do that behind the wheel. I don't know what you're talking about. Mr. Metzner?
Bruce, I'm assuming that everybody should put their trash out Wednesday, no matter what, but don't necessarily assume that it'll be picked up Thursday morning.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing this winter, and, and I would say the collection crews have been doing a good job of catching up.
Been wonderful.
But, but they are going to get behind if we have a significant snow.
And I just ask for everybody...
If there's any updates, we'll, we'll do a press release.
Gotcha.
But right now, that's what we've been doing this winter.
Assuming we get the weather they're calling for, I just hope everybody stays off the road. Hope governments shut down at appropriate times. I think the governor may have already declared a state of emergency, from what I saw recently, but we shall see. But everybody be safe.
Ms. Nye?
The heroin problem continues on. There was another death in the county, one in the city, and one that was brought back. And, yeah, yeah, that was over the weekend, yeah. So I'm just hoping that, for those who are watching, and those who may know, anyone that does do heroin, that they are at risk, but there is medication that is out there, that if the need is there, then please have somebody standing by in case something goes wrong. And happy Valentine's Day...
Oh, yeah.
...to all those who participate.
Well...
That's it.
Is that it? Well, I want to echo what Marty said about going to Annapolis. I think it really does make a difference. Last week, on Thursday, I traveled, no, Wednesday, I traveled down with Donna Brightman from the Board of Ed, an affair that was arranged by our community coalition lobbyist group, and it was nice to, it was a combination of Western Maryland and Montgomery County delegations, which was an interesting combination, especially now that we're all in the same congressional district. It was good to have those conversations amongst different folks. The majority leader of the House of Delegates was there, a lot of other delegates, and not too many other officials from Washington. I think Donna and I were the, were the only ones. Thursday night, I got to go to the governor's mansion as part of the Maryland Mayors Association, and got to chat with the governor, although very briefly, but that was a good, also a good way to network, find out what's going on in other cities across the state of Maryland, share our challenges and successes, and it's always an honor and a privilege to represent Hagerstown at those kinds of things. Lastly, I just want to thank all the fourth graders at Bestrow Elementary School for welcoming me there to their school. That's the third fourth-grade class that we've visited so far to promote the MML If I Were Mayor contest, essay contest, and I'm always amazed at the energy and enthusiasm, and the, the questions that they have, and they gave me some very nice thank you notes as we left, and so I just want to thank them for welcoming me into their classroom today. And if anyone else doesn't have any, any other comments, sure.
I think that we can all mourn the passing of Shirley Temple Black. She was a great lady, and I was fortunate enough to meet her one time at the White House, and it was a lady in Hagerstown, whose name is Mrs. Green, who used to run with her husband Benjamin's Gallery. Mrs. Green was from Germany, and she grew up on Shirley Temple, and I was able to get Shirley Temple's autograph from Mrs. Green, and throughout the rest of her life, she never, ever forgot that. It was, it was very nice.
Thanks for that. All right, we will be adjourned. Thanks.